I declare this meeting of the Winthrop School Board open for business. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Apologies.
That's okay. We're just glad you made it and you're safe. Okay. All right, so roll call. We've got Catherine and Tim. We've got Ivy here and Alicia. We've got Joseph and David and we've got Kelly and Jim. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments, Stephen.
Thank you. Just as an announcement to anybody who didn't see it in the comments, we're going to do the consideration of minutes next, and then the next thing right after that is public comment. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting of December 6, 2023, as written or with corrections.
So.
Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor? Back to zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. We'll take comments both from here in the meeting room and also from Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, please, you know, put the raise your hand thing up so that we know that you'd like to say something. And then we'll start here. Does anybody in the room have a public comment that they'd like to share? All right, anybody on the Zoom have a public comment that they'd like to share?
Nobody had signed in, but give them a second.
All right. With no public comments, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Just, I sent out the, actually sent out quite a while ago, my report. And just wanted to remind you that next one, we meet again next Wednesday, which is gonna be a kind of quick turnaround. We're having some issues with the financial report that I usually send out, so I didn't, it's not the only thing you're getting in the, your, you probably already got it, is next week's agenda. And maybe we'll have the financial report thing straightened out by then. But it is next Wednesday, that's the organizational meeting. The only other thing I have is we have one resignation, Alec Card, middle school science teacher. And happy to answer your questions, Shemaya.
Can you tell me what the issue is with the financial report?
Bernice is here, maybe she can tell you.
There isn't an issue. The report that I sent is correct. It's just that one report shows without the encumbrances of all of the payroll, or the other report shows the encumbrances. So what it says is only 12% left. That's what we have left to spend other than payroll through the rest of the year. So the report is correct.
Bernice, is that just Article One that only shows 12% or is that 12%?
Article Two. Anything that are heavily weighted for wages, there is not a lot to spend left because wages is such a large percentage of that article.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you. I appreciate it.
But it, that says you've encumbered all the salaries, which is eighty something percent of our budget, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
It just looks, when you look at it, it says there's seven percent of the line left, and we have fifty percent of the year left. That feels a little, a little bit weird, so.
So the, so the two reports that come out, one does not have the encumbrances in it, which is probably what you're looking for. The other one shows the encumbrances, which is what we're really got left for money to spend because it's not just salaries, it's salaries and all of the benefits that are encumbered.
Is it possible to show the board both of those reports?
I sent, I sent both of them to Colleen.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I should have them, yep.
Does anybody have any other questions about Jim's superintendent report? Okay, all right. I don't really have a chair report at this point. So moving on to finance.
I did not meet.
Okay, do you have a set next time to meet? And were you all caught up the last time you met? And so we're not gonna be behind? Okay. Okay, thanks. Policy, anything that we need to know about at this point?
We, we did not meet, but then we're all set, I think.
And do you have a next meeting scheduled yet?
No.
Okay, will you let us know when you do schedule that? Thank you. And negotiations, we also did not meet. Our next meeting is scheduled for this coming Thursday, I believe. And that will be our second meeting where people on both sides can bring issues to the table that they want to have addressed during the negotiations. And I'm not sure if you remember from the first time that we talked about this. During negotiations, both parties have the first three meetings to bring anything to the table unchallenged. After that third meeting, anything that gets brought to the table needs to be approved by both parties. So if we bring something after the third meeting, they have to say, yes, we agree to negotiate on that. And vice versa, if they bring something after the third meeting, we have to agree to negotiate on that as well. So this is going to be our second of three meetings. So this is kind of a bring all your issues. If there's anything that we can tentatively agree on right away, then we will, and otherwise, that's all that usually happens during those meetings for the first three is bring your issues so that we know what they are. And then after those first three meetings, we really start digging in and figuring things out. If there's any language changes to the contract, both parties will bring their own language to the, the meeting to say, this is what we, we would like it to say. And then we'll negotiate not only on do we want to change, but also how do we feel about that language? So are they okay with whatever we're saying we want to change and are they okay with our language and vice versa? So right now, we are booked out until the end of March on meetings. And we're hoping to have it done and signed and ready to go by the end of March. If that doesn't happen, we'll just book out more meetings. Right now Catherine and I are on that committee and I will continue on that committee after tonight, just for some continuity to make sure that there's the same information going on. Having a hard time with that word. So that's, that will be after, after the thirty first, that'll be the only interaction that I really have as far as anything to do with the board. Catherine will bring most of those, if not all of those reports to the board, and then if you folks need my information or mine, I'm happy to come and share that information. So. All right, moving on to the administrators' reports. The first is the grade school report from Jolene and Debbie. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about Jolene and Debbie's report? Neither of them are here, but we can get that information to them if they need. Okay. I guess the only thing that I wanted to comment on was how much I enjoyed hearing, reading about the Sunshine Committee doing activities for the staff, like the cookie decorating at the tavern on the hill so that they could have some time to get to know each other outside of the classroom and outside of school and do something fun. So I'm glad that that's happening. Next is the middle school. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about the middle school? Alicia?
Yes, well, I was, I have some friends who attended that and I did not attend the first format. Lori held, Brett had a lot of positive feedback. There are parents out there that are very excited about getting back into the schools to help out in any way that they can. I had actually, well, I guess I had spoken with a mom, a couple moms who had done some tutoring or helped out, helping out in the classroom pre-COVID. And some other kids are in middle school and they're working for to doing that there.
I'll say no positive feedback there. That's good. I did also hear some really great positive feedback from Lori about, you know, her perception of how things went. She was really excited with the fact that there were ten parents there. She was not even expecting that many, so that felt really good to her. Any other comments, questions, or concerns about the middle school report? Okay. Moving on to the high school report, Jay is here with us in the room right now. So if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns for Jay, you can share them with him.
I do have a question. The results of the survey and the questions that were asked for the students. That would be some great.
Bathroom questions and.
Yep, the survey that was sent out, we go in the bathrooms.
Okay, was, I think that's something we were expecting to get results from David or Joseph about, right? Okay, so do you have any results yet that you can share?
Can I, before they, I've been talking this to you for about putting on, on an agenda for January.
Okay.
If we can wait, if not.
Is that perfect? Yep, okay.
Save you a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, so that'll be the second meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Jay?
Let's get his hand up.
Who does? Jay has his hand up. Yes, please. I hope it's on. If it's not, talk with your big outside voice.
Turn on my.
Okay.
Thank you, David. I just want to let folks know that I do have two kids that play varsity. I'm talking in, I will not be here in the second meeting in January, so if you do want that as agenda, I can, I will be with both of you and I will do my best to zoom in as much as I can. The game is at the same time as the board meeting that night, so I could almost get us a score list to, to, to support both of you on that, in that presentation, so. You've both seen the data, I think, should, you can go over it next week.
We can put it on next week. It's not too late.
Would you, would it be better, do you think, all three of you, to have it on next week's instead? Right now, it's a pretty light agenda.
If we have it later on the agenda, I could fly up here from their game or zoom in.
Don't, next week.
Next week, like coming Wednesday?
They play on Wednesday nights.
Everyone, so it doesn't matter which day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Stay with it, let's stay with this second.
We'll keep it.
Well, I'll do my best to, to prepare the two, our two reps, and this is Jolene, if she's available. And she should be, that's her, or she should be around with us until February. And she'll be on again for, for a length of time. So I'll contact her and we'll, we'll meet the four of us. And if I am not available that night at all, whatever questions folks have, I'll be available to get that back to the board. Whenever you'd like.
Thanks, Jay. I appreciate it.
Yes, is it possible we can get, prior to the meeting, a list of the questions that were sent out on that questionnaire?
Yeah, I'll get both to call.
Awesome, thanks, Jay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns for Jay on the high school? Okay, all right. The next report is from Sue Fox, that she's not with us on the Zoom, so if you have questions about the special services, Jim can get those to her, her response. Looks like she was pretty busy with some professional development. Looks like we're fully staffed for special services, which is great. Any questions or comments? Okay, great. The next is for Megan, who again is not on the meeting for the Director of Teaching and Learning. Does anybody have any questions or comments to share with Megan about her report? Okay. Looks like we're getting ready to go into the winter New Year next month, so it'll be interesting to get those results back as well. It's nice to see all of the professional development that's going on at all three of the schools, quite a lot. Alicia?
With the winter New Year, that is optional. Is that opt-in?
It's optional because it's not mandatory by the state, but I don't know the answer to that as far as Jim. Can students decide not to take it, or is it just optional versus mandatory by the state?
I think it's just the option. It's just the optional to do it by the state. But I can, I can ask Megan or whatever.
So Alicia, can students opt out? Thank you. Next is extracurricular and maintenance. Joel is not on the meeting with us, so any questions or comments Jim can share with him? Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, did we get a list of like all the damage from the storm?
We haven't got it.
It's still being where we're at, but getting that all back together.
Still, well, we've, we've got everything back together, but I don't have a complete list of the damage done yet. We will be, there is obviously some, and we will be submitting a claim.
Okay. And will you send that, let us give the information to the board?
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else about Joel's report? And then Ivy, just for clarification, do you, are you looking for just the list of what was damaged, or are you also looking for an estimated cost?
Both would be great, just. Especially when we're going into our financial year.
Thank you. Next is food nutrition, and Sam is on the Zoom with us, so if anybody has any questions about food nutrition for Sam, I'm sure she'd be happy to share information with you. So it's a short but sweet. It looks like the Thanksgiving meals were a lot of fun for the students to participate in and were, were well received.
Yes, they were.
Yes. Okay. Anything coming up on the horizon that would be interesting to the board to know about in food and nutrition? I don't want to fall on the spot.
I don't know. Not that I can really think of. I mean, I'm looking to get a new oven in the middle school.
Okay. And have you've talked to Joel about that already?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I have some, yeah. Gotten some quotes, I'm working on it.
Okay.
So we had a a very unique situation with food service. We had too much money saved up, whatever, because, you know, the last two, when they, whatever, just too much money spent up, so I, I had to charge Sam with finding ways to, we had to put together a plan for the state to spend down some of that money, so. Should be a bit of a spending spree, which sounds nicer than it actually was, right, Sam?
Yeah, it was actually really hard to spend the money.
All right. I'm just writing.
Yeah. And the, the budget they're talking about, is that allocated just for like, it's not food, it's what?
Yeah, it's, it's, no, it would not be food. It's anything except food. It's equipment primarily. And you may remember that the food service is a it's, enterprise, thank you. Yeah, and so they have to kind of, we have to monitor how that works, but they are, their money is kind of separate, so, yeah.
I had to work really hard to find that word the other day when I was meeting with Monica. What is that word? Um, okay, the next is the technology report, and we do have Paul still on the line. If anybody has any questions or comments or concerns about the tech report for Paul?
Yep, we talked about a test for the vape sensor. I don't know if that ever happened or not.
Paul?
Yes, I was just unmuting to answer the question, yep. So I met with Jay soon after the meeting that we had last time where we discussed this. And Jay informed me that he and the assistant principal at Alex tested several products that they accumulated, that you might use in theater and so on, hairsprays and that sort of thing. We were able to identi, they, they were able to identify one product, a, a, a brand, variety of Right Guard aerosol deodorant that was part of, I believe, Hannaford's regular donation to the school, I guess, that they make periodically. Jay is, if Jay's there, he can correct me if I misinform you, but apparently Hannaford has excess material. They make a donation to the school. And this product is typically in, in, included in those donations, and so they make them available to students to use at will in the locker rooms for both the home and visiting players. So that was identified as, as a offset, so now they're going to pull, pull that product and not, not allow it anymore. So the, we have not, we've, haven't received any kind of false vape detection since then. We are getting some tampering readings. Again, it's supposed to be able to detect if somebody's, you know, messing with it to turn it off or disable it. And so I'm, I'm still adjusting some of the controls to monitor that, to, to, again, reduce false positives.
Okay, so I think what I understood that you were saying, Paul, was that that Right Guard aerosol deodorant was testing as the vape. Is that like, yeah, Jay?
It was setting off the vape sensor, as I understand it, yeah.
Jay is gonna talk a little bit more about that, too.
Okay.
Hey, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but Alexis and I, she has the trauma cam. And I asked her to bring it over a period of several days, anything and everything that she had, that the kids would normally use, from perfumes to the bathroom body wash, body sprays, the, the, the clay, you know, smell good that you would use. You know, we, we tested tons of, tons of stuff. And the Right Guard, the best way I can describe it is I hadn't, it's nothing I've seen since, since I was a kid back in the eighties. I think that's why I would get it from Hannaford because, and we sell it anymore, but that, when you really spray that toward the sensor, it was, it was setting it off. And just like the tampering, what we've had to do, and I had a training with Paul afterwards, with the folks from Burkata, is just like, there, there's certain levels of, of detection. And I guess, Paul, if I'm, if I'm wrong correctly, it was, it was, it was set at a, at a, at a wrong center, and we, we've, we've adjusted those at the company's request to make sure that we don't get those false positives. And we also pulled that stuff off of the, off of the, off of the shelves or out of the, out of the, and put alternative products in there for just to use. What I, what I, you know, when I talked to a couple of students and I talked to Mr. Van Hassel, folks happening, there's a few of them, a few of the kids that would use that Right Guard, almost like a body spray. And they would just, you know, and where the sensor is located in the men's locker room, if, if you'll, if you'll notice, you know, the bathroom stalls are here and the sinks are here, and there's not a lot of gap in between, and it's right there. So the kid is standing at the, at the mirrors and is just spraying it incessantly. It was setting it off. And since Paul did some adjustments, and the same tampering, you know, we found some of the vibrations of like the water pumps turning on would, would, would set off false alarms, that it's been a process of, of just, you know, getting these things right and changing the settings to get them right. So, did I say that right, Paul?
Yes, the, the tampering seems to have been sympathetic with, you know, vibrations from, we believe, the water pump activating, like when it needs to. It's kind of like an air compressor. When it gets low, it turns on, and generally the same with the water pump. So I have lowered the sensitivity for that, and that has improved the situation as well as raised the tolerance for the vape sensor, and that seems to have worked, worked to improve, yeah.
Alicia? Is it maybe you can send this out, but have you noticed a decreased number of positive vaping, whatever, accurate?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, since they were installed, I've noticed a very sharp decrease in, in, in vape detection, for sure. It's a, been a very proactive measure, for sure.
And so when that goes off, is there, does it, this record each, like times during the day?
So it, it records sort of a bookend of the event before and after. You know, we get, as administrators and Paul gets them too, we get the alerts. And then we look at the, at the cameras that are in, like if it's in the gym, for example, there's a, there's a camera by the door, so you can see and identify the kids coming in, coming out there at those times to identify, or try to identify what it was and what was, and try to narrow it down. It's, nothing's an exact science, but it's a, a very proactive measure, and the kids know they're in there and it's, it's been good so far.
Thank you very much for answering my questions. I did submit that information, I think it's called SEED.
Yep. We give it to you.
The youth group, the younger adults, I think you say, who presented at the main school management conference.
Is it three pages?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a campaign, so. And they, they were the, they were the ones who presented on vaping at that conference.
And that's a good segue. I, I will say that the chug, my student leadership team this year, what they really want to work on was preventative measures for vaping. I've invited these two to the next meeting. Our last meeting was canceled because of the storm, but have two in January. So one of the things we want to get back to is, is, is talking about the entire student leadership team about the, the results of the survey. And also to continue the work of, you know, how they want to do this work with preventative and proactive against, you know, sort of a campaign against, against.
Paul, Jay, and Lexi too, I just want to thank you for making sure that you're working through things so, so that there's not a false positive that's gonna cause mayhem at the school, both emotionally and, and, you know, otherwise. I think that's great. Thank you for that work. I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything for Paul before we move on? Okay. The next page again is, is for Paul, is about the cybersecurity, and I suspect that you have all looked at that as well. The next is transportation, and we do not have Josh on the call, but if there are any questions about the transportation report, Jim can get those questions to Josh. Any questions, comments, or concerns about transportation?
Ivy? No, but I would like to share that it would have been nice to receive the information of all these issues going on with the electric buses before reading it in the media. So I just, you know, as a team, we'll work together. This information I thought would have been more, better coming from our, our group and our team than being read in the media.
I guess I, I don't know what information was in that that hadn't been shared during a public meeting, so I'm just, maybe you weren't at a meeting when we've been talking about that?
Possibly. All I know is I got, all we got is a very brief outline that there was some issues with the buses, other than that.
We've been talking extensively.
Yeah, I think that, that one meeting that you missed there, we talked about the windshield and stuff like that.
But I, and I just want to add, I think what's most frustrating, and probably where you're coming from, is we kind of hope those issues would have been resolved months ago, and they're still on, they're not any different than they were months ago, but they're still ongoing. And one of the things I, it's in my next report for next week, is I'm in a meeting with the town council asking for an update on that, and I think Josh is gonna attend that. But the, this is taken on, not just here in Winthrop, but in the state, it's a big issue that, that Lion is not delivering a great product. And Governor Mills has initiated a task force type of thing, not, not a task force, that's the wrong word, but she's, she looked into this and she's really very concerned about the product that they've delivered, and they're, they've responded very well to us. They're here within a day. Whenever we have issues, they just unable to correct the major issues that have kept a couple of our buses off most of the year.
Is there any thought about completely replacing those two buses?
Well, that's ironic you ask that, because that's exactly what I suggested. I don't know why, I don't know how they should be allowed to deliver buses to other people without taking care of us first.
I guess to, to kind of, what I was saying, so the heating issue and the fact that that has dealt with the, of the four buses, that was a new bit of information, because I don't think that he had spoken about that before. And if we figure out Lion is paying for our renting.
They are.
They're paying for the renting. The one thing that they're not paying for, which doesn't make me super happy, is the gas. Because if we had the vehicles, we wouldn't be spending money on gas, which makes me a little not happy. But the fact that if we're having to replace them with rentals, they're at least paying. Um, but the fact that if we're having to replace them with rentals, they're at least paying for that part.
Are they paying for any of the repairs? Like, I know we had it at the window glass place across from Charlie's there, so I didn't know if they were covering a hundred percent of all the
They are. They're they're covering not just, but any repair that they make. Um, I can't remember how many years, the warranties, but particularly these ones, a hundred percent.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about transportation, Ivy?
Well, I think if we're if we're looking at, we have a warranty on these, um, I think the issues we've had and if we maintain these vehicle, um, buses that have issues that we make a deal to extend that warranty even longer um so that we're not getting a more issues that we have to pay for.
That's that's a great idea. They have to go on those two buses at the very least, yeah. Any, so is there any update on the heating system? I mean, Will came home and told me that there was heating a system for two days, but not that it was a much bigger issue than that on his bus.
No, from my understanding, that has been correct.
Yeah, so are they making good on the warranties then? Okay.
Yeah, we have not had to pay any, well, let me backtrack that. I'm gonna say we haven't had to pay anything out of pocket for any repairs. With that said, we have to pay out of pocket for the rentals and then we get reimbursed for that. So the money does go out, then it does come right back. Uh, but we have not been on the hook for the repairs for any of the electric buses. Anything else? Yeah, um, so that is the end of the administrator's report. So moving on to um the audit present- presentation by Jennifer Honors of Runyon Kirsten and Will, did I see that second one? I usually just, sorry, ask you. And we do have a presentation to share. So Jill will share that on his computer through uh the Zoom as well, so everybody who's present and sure that that is one. So you are up. Normally, we would ask you to use the microphone at the podium. Um, that's not a happening thing, so if you want to grab one of the students' microphones, feel free to bring a chair right on up to the table, absolutely. Um, and you do have extras of the um things for the folks who are in the room? Because we don't have this, are these grabbed on the same day?
Everything, yeah.
Somebody can have online, and you, Jay and Monica, you not have the right tech. And that's
She didn't really have some of our Oh, I can listen to pilot that goes to my filing cabinet. Thank you, Jim. All right, you're up. And just press the button like Jen. Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you for having me. Uh, so we're here to talk about the results of the fiscal year twenty twenty three audit. And for those of you who missed the conversation earlier, uh, this is just focusing on the school department's portion of the audit. Um, and these are draft reports. Uh, once we wrap up the town's portion of the audit, then we will issue final reports for this. Um, we did put together a set of graphs. I think everyone should have a copy of that at this point. It's just a brief overview of the audit results and some of the numbers from the financial statements themselves. So I will go through the graphs and then if you have any questions or comments, uh, feel free to jump in at any point. And uh, I assume you'll let me know if somebody on Zoom flags.
So everybody can see it. All right, so where, what page of your report would you like to start on so that Jim knows what to present to the public?
Uh, we're gonna go right to the the second graph.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, I would like to say that the audit did go very well and I would like to thank Bernice and the staff for being very well prepared. Uh, we actually uh came to the audit a month earlier than when we normally do. Um, and Bernice was very nice about it. She was able to get a lot of the information prepared and ready for us ahead of time. Uh, and we appreciate the fact that uh she was able to get us through the door earlier than we would normally be here. Uh, so to give you an idea of the timing of the audit, we were here June first and second to do some pre-audit work. And then we came back the week of September eleventh to do the the year end audit, so as far as the financial statements go, they did receive an unmodified opinion, uh, which is a clean opinion on the financial statements. So they are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, we, besides the audit of the financial statements themselves, we are also required to do some procedures under government auditing standards. And we actually issue a separate report in accordance with government auditing standards. Uh, we did have uh one finding, which is a material weakness related to middle school cash procedures. And we'll get into that a little bit further into the the presentation. And then because the school department has over, uh, or the town and school department combined uh have over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant expenditures, they are required to undergo what's called a single audit in accordance with the annual bond guidance. And under those requirements, uh, we uh do some testing of the school department's budget grants. In this particular year, we tested the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, also known as ESR or ESR. And under that testing, uh, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as far as internal controls over that grant go. And we also had no compliance findings, so a clean audit for the compliance portion of the audit. Then I'm gonna jump into uh the next few graphs. So these graphs, um, they do focus on the school department's general fund uh simply because that is where the main operations of the school department are accounted for. Uh, it's your hardest, most important fund. Um, however, I will point out that I did give you a draft copy of the school department's financial statements. And so there is additional information included in the financial statements that you're not going to see in this graphs. In the graphs, so for example, if you flip to statements one and two, you'll see uh there are other funds as well, such as the school lunch fund, uh, the capital projects fund. Uh, so there is additional information in the financial statements uh beyond what I presented here. So on page three, uh, we have an overview of the general funds, fund balance slash deficit. Um, oh, so over the last five fiscal years, uh, this is the general funds fund balance broken down into its different categories. So um, in two thousand nineteen, you can see that the school department actually still still had a deficit of almost one point two million dollars. Uh, that deficit was wiped out in twenty twenty and then uh the fund balance has remained positive for the last three fiscal years. Uh, it peaked in twenty twenty two and then it did reduce in fiscal year twenty twenty three. The fund balance is broken down into three different categories. Uh, there's a portion of non-spendable, which there there was nothing in that category this year. That is typically made up of inventory or prepaid items. Uh, and it's called non-spendable simply because those uh resources are not readily available to be used in the next fiscal year because they've already been spent.
Jen, can I add something, please?
Sure.
Um, between twenty two and twenty three, it does look like our fund balance went down. However, it's because we transferred funds to the capital reserves and spent them there rather than just leaving them in the undesigned maybe fund balance.
Yes, that's correct. You're you're getting ahead of me a little bit, but that's okay. Uh, so the next category in fund balance is assigned fund balance. Those are amounts that have been internally designated for specific uses. And in twenty twenty three, there was two hundred and seventy five thousand that had been earmarked to be used in the FY twenty four budget. And then unassigned fund balance is that category that is basically what's left over in the fund balance once you put items into those other categories. So total fund balance between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty three has increased uh to just under one million dollars. However, in fiscal year twenty twenty three, as uh Bernice mentioned, uh, fund balance actually decreased by about five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
And then, before you move on, can you talk, we've got two relatively new people on the board and then one behind you that's coming on the board next year. Can you talk a little bit about why twenty twenty has nothing? Does that mean?
Yeah, they don't like to play with each other.
Oh, okay.
You just have to press it. You don't have to hold it.
Got it. Okay. Um, sure. So in I don't remember what year it it originally, it originated, but the the school department did have a deficit fund balance for several years. And then in twenty twenty, uh, decision was made uh by the town council to essentially make the school department whole. So they uh did a one-time transfer to the school department to eliminate that deficit. So they uh they transferred enough to basically break even. And then from that year forward, uh, they started building their fund balance back up again. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, if you go to the next one. So on page four, we have a graph that looks just at the school department's unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. Um, this measure is used a lot to kind of gauge how healthy your unassigned fund balance is. Um, again, it's that portion of your fund balance that carries over to the next fiscal year that can be basically used for anything. Uh, now in FY twenty two, the state of Maine um increased its threshold of maximum unassigned unbalance. In the past, the state of Maine um has limited school departments and school districts to just three percent of their budget to be carried over. Um, and then in fiscal year twenty twenty two, they actually increased that percentage to nine percent. And that uh percentage is one to stay in place until twenty twenty five, do you remember? Okay. A few more years, basically, and then it will drop down to five percent. Um, so we look at that also to make sure that the school department isn't carrying more in unassigned fund balance than the state says that you should carry. If you do exceed that threshold, then the state does give you three years to come up with a plan and and spend that excess fund balance down. So in twenty twenty two, uh, you did exceed that threshold. The unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget was actually over ten percent. But in fiscal year twenty twenty three, it actually dropped down to five point eight percent. So that's actually a really good position to be in because you're really close to where that threshold was going to be in a few years. So you kind of want to just monitor that and make sure you stay right around that five percent. And as Bernice mentioned, a lot of that has to do with the fact that uh the school department did do um a fairly large transfer to capital projects fund. And then just move on to the next graph. Uh, the next couple of graphs are an overview of the school department's revenues and expenditures on a budget-to-actual basis. Uh, so we take a look at some of the budget-to-actual variances, at least some of the larger amounts. Uh, so state education subsidy was higher than budgeted, uh, that had to do with changes at the state level. Uh, both Medicare reimbursements and other revenues uh were both over and under budget. Um, and that is because typically those are are hard to anticipate. And in total, you can see that revenues were actually only two thousand dollars over budget, which is really, really close. It was less than one percent of the budget. And then on the next page, uh, we have the same graph, um, only looking at the general fund expenditures. So regular instruction expenditures were under budget, uh, costs for hiring new staff were lower than anticipated for salaries and benefits. Special education expenditures were also under budget due to changes in staffing costs. Other instruction expenditures were under budget as athletic transportation and coach salaries were lower than anticipated. Facilities maintenance uh was about a hundred eighty six thousand dollars under budget uh due to an unbilled position and custodial supply and cleaning costs that were lower than anticipated. And then in total, uh, expenditures were seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under budget, uh, which is about five point seven percent of the budget. However, the, um, as I mentioned, the school department did do that transfer of nine hundred fifty six thousand dollars out, which in that case uh reduced, or I should say increased total expenditures so that they actually uh exceeded the total budget by one point nine percent. And actually, if the transfer had not taken place, your ending fund balance would have increased by four hundred and forty two thousand dollars. And then on the next page, uh, this is um something that's a little different. We um typically present the pie graphs. Uh, for those of you that have met with me in the past, uh, we have a pie graph that show each um expenditure category as a percentage of the total expenditures. Uh, this year, we did something a little different where we took the twenty twenty three percentages and the twenty twenty two percentages. And then we also presented statewide percentage percentages, which are available on the Department of Education's website. So you can kind of have an idea of how you line up to other school districts and school departments on a statewide basis. So pointing out some of the differences, uh, regular instruction was actually about seven percent lower than the statewide average. And it actually decreased by about six percent from twenty twenty two. On the flip side, uh, the other category and transfers out were seven percent higher than the statewide average. Debt service also increased three percent over twenty twenty two. And then the rest of the categories basically were within one, one and a half percent of the state average, so they're actually pretty close. And it is interesting because the statewide averages are just that. So you have, you know, very large uh departments like the public, like Portland School Department. And then you have um smaller towns, um, and rural towns like the state county towns. So and they all kind of come to that middle line. That is it what I have for the graphs. Any questions about any of those?
Anybody here in the room have any questions about those graphs? Can you kind of?
They are very, very general. I'm wondering, I'm sitting here wondering what sorts of things go into um, you know, in terms of the auditors or the administrators, what sorts of things
Uh, so these are based on the articles that um we use for the budgeting. Um, so you will be getting kind of a primer on that when you come on the board and talking more about how that works. That's part of what we were talking about, that it's really important for you to sit in on at least one of those finance committee meetings so that you can understand what gets paid and what doesn't get paid and why.
I see you've got a specific pass.
Right, because this report is kind of an overview.
Yeah, right, yes.
Uh, before we move on, does anybody on the Zoom have any questions uh about what we just presented? I don't see anything. You can move on, thank you.
Uh, the other thing that I was wanting to address, um, you do have a draft of the management letter comments that we have. Um, it's a letter that's only about three pages, yeah, it's about three pages long. Um, I did mention before uh the comment that at the middle school, so I just wanted to to bring that up. Um, in total, we've had three comments. Uh, one was material weakness and two were what we call other comments. So for internally full findings, there are basically three levels. Um, the the highest level that we when the the level that is the most severe would be material weakness. A step down from that would be a significant deficiency. And then below that would be other comments. Other comments are items that we don't really consider to be serious, but we just bring them to your attention. They're more of recommendations. Um, the reason that the middle school cash procedures uh is a material weakness is because um there was some turnover at the middle school and there was some turnover at the middle school and due to the turnover, the bank reconciliations were not being performed for the activity funds. Uh, they were not performed for several months and there was actually, uh, quite a bit of documentation that was not retained. Um, no, we didn't. I will clarify and say we didn't see any evidence of any wrongdoing. It was just it happens. We know you have staff turnover and a new person took over that position and then they had some, some catch-up to do. Um, but bank reconciliations are considered an essential internal control. Um, and if they're not performed, um, on a regular basis, then that kind of opens you up to, um, errors, uh, fraud that might not be caught right away. So for that reason, um, we did, um, elevate that to a level of material weakness. Uh, my understanding is that that has been addressed going forward. So you will probably see that comment go away next year.
I just have a clarification, uh, so that the finding is based on not having, A, not having done the reconciliation, but also not having the paperwork to show that the reconciliation was done and not that there was money missing, right?
That's correct. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, the other two comments that we had, I will just mention them briefly. Like I said, they're, they're really not significant. Um, we have a general comment about segregation of duties, which actually applies to both the town and the school department. And for those of you who are not familiar with segregation of duties, that is when you take a process or procedure and you break it up so that different employees are performing different parts of that process or procedure. So it, it essentially allows, uh, someone to be looking over someone else's shoulder. If you have one person that's doing all of the steps, um, more likely that will be the error is a mission to the sore profit. Um, the typical example that you will see with that would be the handling of cash. Uh, if you have one person who is taking in cash and, uh, doing the journal entries for cash, you typically don't also want that same individual doing the bank reconciliations that prepare the deposits. You're always going to have this to a certain degree because you will have certain areas where you have, uh, one individual who's performing several steps of that task. Typically, that would be the, uh, the individual schools with the activity funds where you usually have one individual who was collecting the cash, preparing the deposits, keeping the records, uh, they're doing all of those procedures. So, um, we know it's a cost benefit analysis. You can't really have enough staff and you have ideal segregation duties. Um, but we still point out because there is a risk there. So. And then the other comment we had had to do, uh, with school and inventory. Uh, we did some cost testing for school lunch inventory and that is when we, uh, picked certain items on the inventory list. And then we essentially pulled the invoices for those items and we verified that the cost per unit agrees with the amount on the invoice, at least the most recent invoice. And we did find some items that buried the fraud, uh, the most recent prices that were paid. So we just pointed that out that, um, the school lunch department should make sure that those prices are updated on a regular basis, uh, as they are supposed to reflect. The inventory balance should be reflected at the most recent prices that have paid. So.
Uh, before we move on really quickly, uh, for those of us that have a copy of this letter and you're looking at it, you'll also notice that there's a management response and a corrective action plan for each of these three findings. Um, so they all three have been discussed with Jim and Bernice already and there's already been a plan in, uh, in acted, uh, for each of those so that they can be resolved ongoing. This is not something where we were waiting to hear today to make those changes. So, um, that's already been addressed. Uh, and if you have questions about those, please make sure you talk with Jim, um, about them. And just for Monica, she's sitting behind you. She's one of our newest members. So if I keep talking behind you, that's why. Um, this segregation of duties is exactly why there's at least two people on the finance committee and that they're looking at everything that Ida pays out, uh, just so that there's more than one set of eyes on everything.
Thank you. Sure. I have a question.
Yeah.
So I see this is kind of like a brief outline of, of my audit, just very simple. Um, do we have access to look at the complete audit? Is that something that, or something that you have or something that the school board's allowed to see? Uh, so you do have a draft of the, um, school department financial statements. Um, the only piece that's really missing is you don't have the town's financial statements. And that is because we're, we're still wrapping up that technology, uh, agreement information that I talked about earlier. Uh, so you, you actually have three draft reports. You have the school department financial statements. I did also give you a draft of the compliance report. And then, uh, the management letter that we just went over.
Is your button, is, are any of your buttons down? Just push it down and leave it go. We'll see if that will. We don't have our poll here. Usually fixes those things for us.
So these are just, these are pretty complete just for the school board.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Joel.
Any final questions, uh, for Jen before she heads home?
Carefully.
Very carefully.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Bernice.
Yeah. So thank you, Bernice, for being here and for being able to provide some input along the way as well. We appreciate all of the work that you've done to have this happen too. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's not just Bernice, it's a team.
Yes, it is, but you're a big part of the team. So thank you. Um, all right. Moving on to bold business, we are going to enter into an executive session. Uh, at this point, we do not know how long the executive session will be. There will be further business after the executive session. So for those of you who are here in the room, we will ask you to leave room. And for those of you on the Zoom, the Zoom meeting will, uh, be suspended until we're done with the executive session. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to enter into the executive session to discuss the interim updated progress on goals by the superintendent pursuant, pursuant to one M R S A subsection four oh five six A.
So.
Any discussion before we enter in? Okay. Um, thank you.